Good evening, I apologize for the delay. Tonight, we have the middle school representative speak out. And the first to come to the podium is Ballyette Middle School. Jordan Tyson, Alyssa Rodriguez, Luz Pacheco. And they are accompanied by Serena Gray, Assistant Principal. Come on down. Ballyette in the house? Yeah, right there.
Hi, my name is Luz Pacheco and I'm from Ballyette Middle. And I'm 7th grade over there.
I'm Malaysia. 7th grade.
I'm Nela Nikoro and I'm in 7th grade as well.
I'm Jordan Tyson and I go to Ballyette and I'm in 7th grade.
We like to talk about our school and like how like a really good place it is. I'm gonna start off by saying, explaining like how it is. Their education is really good. The smaller classes makes it easier for like all the teachers like get involved with the students and talk to them more and like explain more works like they understand. And they help out the kids there and like help them go through their struggles that they had throughout the years to make them better people for the future and everything. And the staff have like anytime they need to to talk to the kids one-on-one. It's like they feel good about themselves. Like today, I had like a breakdown in class and my teacher pulled me out of class, talked to me, made me feel good. I've had a good rest of my day. Basically, so.
Very good. Thank you. Nice job. Oh, no. Girls, you gonna say anything else? You did a nice job, right from the heart, off the top of your head. Don't be.
At Ballyette, it is an alternative school, but you know, the work is the same. And the teachers do help you out a lot. The classes, it's easier to learn stuff quicker because it's so small, you know? There's only probably like nine of us in the class. And you don't feel judged here, you know? Like at other schools, if you have behavioral problems, though, you feel kinda judged, but if you go here, you don't feel judged, you know? It's like you're all the same, everybody's equal. Yeah.
Nice job, Jordan. Go ahead, ladies. Yeah, cool.
Hi.
How you doing?
Sorry, I'm a little scary.
You're doing fine.
I like this school because especially that when I walk in the building, I know that everybody's gonna be happy. There's not gonna be one single soul in there that's sad or mad. It's just everybody's jolly. And for me, like I'm a person that like if I don't see a smile, I don't smile. Like, so when you walk in the building, there's always someone saying, "Welcome, how's your day? How was your weekend? How was your vacation?" So, that's why I like that school. And basically everywhere you turn, there'll be a teacher. There'll always be like someone asking you how, what's wrong? If you have a frown or if you, even if you're mean mugging, like if you're like, you just have a mad face, just, "What's wrong?", you know? And it's just, I just like that school a lot. Thank you.
Nice job, Mr. Healy.
So, Ballyette, it makes you feel welcome. And there's like, no one judges you there. And the work is actually kinda good. We're known as like students that are really, really bad, but we're not like that. We're like really smart and yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies. Right from the heart, good job.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. Okay. That was very, right from the heart. Very good, young ladies. Springfield Public Day Middle Schools in the house. David Healy, Andrew Hernandez, come down. They're accompanied by Linda Singer, who is Assistant Vice Assistant Principal, and Brianna Clancy, a teacher. Like those sneakers. And like that tie. Very good.
Hello, my name is Andrew Hernandez. I go to Springfield Public Day Middle School.
You're doing fine, Andrew.
I have been in public day. My grades have got better. I've been passing all my classes. I don't be bad anymore like I used to in my old school. My, the teachers in the school are nice to the students and they encourage us to do our work. We have PBIS in the school. We get to earn like interventions. Like you go, we go on trips. Like we're going on one tomorrow to Amherst College.
Great.
We, they have, um, big collections of dinosaur tags and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing them. Springfield Public School is a, a small school, but the right school for me.
Nice job, Andrew. Good job. Mr. Healy?
Hello, my name is David Healy. I have been attending Springfield Public Day for three years. In that time, I've learned a lot, not only academically, but with the help of all the parents, teachers, and other adults that have taken the time to understand me, I've begun to understand myself. I also have been given some great opportunities, like being a part of the student council and attending field trips to museums and colleges. I also was able to take part in a drumming class. I've done many things in the time I've been there, and if I've gained nothing from that, I've gained the confidence that I'm ready for the next step of my life, whatever that may be. And I hope everyone else can gain that confidence in themselves because I know it's possible. Thank you.
Nice job. Good job, Springfield Public Day. Very good job. South End Middle Schools in the house. My pal Damian Gonzalez is here somewhere. And accompanied by Principal Sheriff Desper. Damian, you got a new hairdo, man? Looks good.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
He's like your poster child. But man.
Good evening, members of the school committee, Mayor Sando and Superintendent Warwick. My name is Damian Gonzalez already. I'm 8th grade student at South End Middle School. I heard, I am here tonight to tell you about some of the good things happened at South End since I last talked to you in January. To start it off, at South End Middle School, we had a celebration before April break. It was bingo again. Students had to do it again, invited was to be prepared and get over the percentage of stamps from the teachers. But if students didn't have enough stamps, if students had honor roll, they were still invited to bingo. And bingo, the prizes were spectacular. For example, a few prizes were personal dress down day, Six Flags, season pass, Chipotle for an entire class, three rounds of Sour Patch Kids, popcorn for entire class, gift certificates, and other prizes that would make students become competitive with each other. The most fun part about bingo was the fact that you couldn't just fill the board, you would have to make a shape or letter that your bingo sheet wanted you to fill in. Well, I want to tell you about some programs that are happening at our school. The first program is our music program, Sunita Musica. This music program practices every Friday and sometimes on Saturdays. The students are working to be prepared for a concert at STCC and the Springfield Museums. It'll be in front of hundreds of people during the dedication of Dr. Seuss Museum. The second program I want to tell you about is the leader program run by Worcester State University. This program happens every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday afternoon. Helps kids to learn about their culture and helps them with any of their needs, like reading and math. They also bring students to field trips like going to colleges so they can see what they have, so they can see their interest in colleges. We have also gone to the aquarium. We have had special visitors to teach us music and dance. And this year, I and the entire group of 8th grade students are taking MCAS 2.0 on the computers. We are extremely nervous since it is new and we are not 100% sure how to understand the new setup for testing. We all hope that we could just do as well as our teachers expect from us. Next year, I'll be upon, uh, next year, I will be attending Putnam Academy High School with a few of my classmates. But even though I got in, it is still not as good news because a few of my classmates didn't get their first choice. They're really saddened and upset, and I feel their sorrow. Thank you for allowing me to tell you what's going on at South End Middle School. I hope to see you again when I am the school representative to the school committee. Thank you for your time.
Damian, good job. Damian, I like the new hairdo. And you got taller, too. I noticed. It's been around for a while. Now, Zenetti Montessori's in the house. I know this is very near and dear and special to our vice chair, Attorney Peter Murphy, because we have the lovely Claire Murphy, we have Michaelia Kozmerski, Carmain Landrum, Francis Valerando. And correct that if I'm wrong, please. Come on up. Valdorama, Valdorama. And they're accompanied by their principal, Tara Clark.
Are you guys ready?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Hello, my name is Francis Valdorama. I am an 8th grader at Zenetti. At the last school committee meeting, I talked about my school's MCAS scores and the amazing things our teachers do to support us. At today's meeting, I will be talking about our school's community and how we come together for our monthly assemblies. The first Friday of every month, we go to a school assembly that is run by our principal, Mrs. Clark, and vice principal, Ms. Kleins. At these assemblies, we announce important and big news. The school chorus performs. We present our citizen of the month, the winner of the Golden Fork, the winner of the staff raffle, perfect attendance, and the assigned grade presents their piece trade of the month. As Zenetti, we have many things doing, going on to keep the students and staff interacted with each other and to give the students something to look forward to at school. We start our assemblies with a performance from our school chorus. Our school chorus has over 30 students in it. The chorus meets in the morning before school, a short period during school, and the middle school chorus, which I am a part of, meets every Wednesday. To be a part of chorus, you must have good grades because chorus is during class. Every month, each teacher picks one student from their class that represents the character trait of the month. This role model student is announced at the monthly assembly as a citizen of the month. The Golden Fork is something we do at lunch. In the cafeteria, there is a chart with all the classrooms posted. In this chart, we tally and mark every day that a class showed exemplary behavior. During each class's lunch break, the lunch mothers watch over us and pay attention to all the classes that show this good behavior. At the end of the month, the tallies of each class are counted, and the class with the highest number of tallies gets the Golden Fork, which is literally a huge golden fork that is hung up on the winner's class door. To appreciate our teachers and staff members, every month, we hold a raffle at the assembly and pick out two staff members' names. These two winners get a bag with gifts. This is a way to show the staff how much our school appreciates them. Every class has an attendance record at Zenetti. As students, we think of our attendance as a game to win. Every month at the assembly, our vice principal, Ms. Kleins, announces each room's number of students with perfect attendance from the beginning of that month to the end. And these students are awarded with a certificate. Here at Zenetti, we have six pillars of character: responsibility, caring, citizenship, respect, fairness, and trustworthiness. Every month, a classroom gets one of these pillars to present at the assembly. Classrooms become creative and they present by song, PowerPoint, plays, whatever their presentation style is, the key point is to show the school that they know what it means to be a part of the Zenetti community. These assemblies every month allows us to work together as a community to show how we feel about being at Zenetti. We show it by song, by knowledge, and by appreciation. I like being a part of this chorus and community because I know it shows my teachers how far I have come as a student and as a person. Students show how they have grown and matured. We show what we know and admire the other things students have done, and this is why we have assemblies.
Nice job, Francis.
Hi, my name is Michaela Kozmerski. I go to Zenetti and I'm here to talk a little about the amazing extracurricular activities around our school and how they enrich our minds and everyday lives with beneficial knowledge. The first thing I want to talk about is our awesome after-school group called Girls Inc. This group is about educating and empowering young women in our community and how important our role in society is. We learn in our retard communication skills, positive problem-solving, leadership skills, goal-setting, confidence-building, and how to resist peer pressure. But most of all, we are, we learn and are repeatedly reinforced how to be strong, smart, and bold. Girls Inc. is all about positive, alternatives, and reputation importance. Our instructor, Jaleen Lugo, is an amazing, inspiring leader that we all look up to and strive to be like. The group's sessions are on Tuesdays right after school and are held until 5:30. There are about nine of us in this after-school group, and each of us all love it. We not only are taught things ourselves, but we also try and pass down our knowledge to young girls and peers throughout our school. Another extracurricular event that is held at our school and deeply liked is our multicultural night. This is where families of all ethnicities come together and celebrate our backgrounds. Throughout the night, cultural dances and beautiful performances are held, where we not only admire the uniqueness of the showings, but also learn others' culture and feed our curiosity. Ethnic foods are served, and everyone enjoys the different varieties of plentiful foods from all around the world. Multicultural night not only celebrates and welcomes diversity, but it's also a night to celebrate, to step out of your shell, meet new people, and learn new wonders of things you've perhaps never known before. Both of these events are extracurricular and extremely beneficial and liked in our Zenetti community. Without these events, we wouldn't be knowledgeable of things not taught inside of a regular classroom environment. Zenetti always loves hosting and supplying extracurricular activities because we know how amazing they are and how much they teach us. Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carmani Landrum. As of now, I am an 8th grade student at Zenetti Montessori Middle School. I am here today to talk to you about taking MCAS online and our wonderful cafeteria environment. This year, the 8th grade students from the state of Massachusetts were chosen to take MCAS online. A couple of things our teachers at Zenetti did to prepare us to take MCAS is during our classes, our teachers had us work a greater amount of time on bright space and big ideas. The tools in these programs helped us as students succeed while taking MCAS. The PTO Parents and Springfield College have during the MCAS period been donating snacks for the students taking MCAS so that the students will have something to eat to create brain flow. Overall, taking MCAS wasn't too hard, and I think it should be done again next year. On the other hand, our wonderful cafeteria environment at Zenetti, I believe, is like no other in the Springfield district. Our cafeteria has a salad bar with fruits and vegetables. Also, if the students at Zenetti would like water, there's a choice of that as well in our cafeteria. At Zenetti, there is a fork called the Golden Fork awarded at the end of the month based on checkmarks to class, to a class or classes depending on how well the class's behavior and etiquette is throughout the month. Lastly, we have our wonderful staff to admire at Zenetti Montessori that lend us a helping hand whenever possible. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Landrum. Nice job.
Hi, my name is Claire Murphy. I'm in 8th grade and have been a student at Zenetti Montessori School since I was three years old. The end of the year at Zenetti is full of fun and engaging events that we work hard throughout the school year to earn. All three middle school grades, 6th, 7th, and 8th, take a trip to Six Flags New England as a reward of all the hard work we have done throughout the school year. I went last year and spending the day outside the work environment with all of my friends is a middle school memory I will never forget. We also have a middle school dance during the last week of school. We spend a couple hours during the school day and just have fun with friends. Spirit Week is another excitement-filled week that happens the last week of school, where we get to dress up and express ourselves. The days during Spirit Week have themes which could be Twin Day, Disney Day, or many others. Then the 8th graders take an annual trip to the High Meadows Resort as a reward of all the hard work they have done at Zenetti most of their life. Most of the 8th graders have been a student at Zenetti for 11 years, so we have a big graduation ceremony where the Zenetti Middle School Chorus sings and students and teachers give speeches. Since most of us have been at the school for 11 years, all our elementary school teachers come and all students and teachers get all dressed up, and then we have a gathering in the school cafeteria after the ceremony is done. Parents come and celebrate their kids going to high school with cake and drinks. There are so, there are so many more fun-filled events that happen at the end of the school year at Zenetti. We all love all the privileges we get and are so thankful. Thank you. And a special thank you to our principal, Mrs. Clark, to making all of these amazing things happen.
Nice job.
You got all this time off?
Hey Claire, you got a big, you got a big fan over here.
What's with all this time off, Tara? We gotta cancel those extracurricular activities.
Claire, Dad's gonna chaperone the dance.
Springfield Conservatory of the Arts is in the house. Shaniqua Menzies, Victoria Vasquez, Sanaya C. Brooks. They're accompanied by Ms. Rachel Santore, Assistant Principal, and Susan Nickerson, English Teacher. Come on down. If I pronounce your name wrong, please correct me. I love, love the shirts.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Ayana. Thank you for inviting us back. We are from Springfield Conservatory of the Arts and we are a part of a kindness Kickstarter. We meet after school with Ms. Nickerson every week and have been working on creating a more positive and productive school culture. In addition to partnering with Start With Hello, we create kindness goals each week and convey to them to the student's body through our announcements. We work with the PBIS Committee to create positive incentives for the school. We also create a collage to encourage students to have goals, not only for their academics, but for promoting kindness, fostering an environment that all students want to be a
Going forward, we will be handing out bracelets.
Tell me your name first.
I'm Victoria.
Okay, Victoria. Loud and proud.
Going forward, we will be handing out bracelets to students who exhibit acts of kindness. These bracelets. Anytime one of the kindness kickstars, show, Kickstarter's catches a student being kind or helping another student or teacher, they will receive a bracelet. Not only that, they will get a shadow on our bulletin board for spreading positive gossip. We will also be leaving behind works of art randomly around the school, hopes of making someone's day. Sometimes acts of kindness are unspoken words. Lastly, we, we hang up compliment tags and acts of kindness all around the school for students to give out and perform another spread of positivity. These are the posters we hang up. And this is the certificate we got. This program, we are building a safe community for, for students by promoting kindness. Next year, we will be continuing our partnership with them. Representatives will come to our school in August and train educators in the mental health and training program that helps identify teens that are displaying adverse behaviors and provides them with tools and strategies to help. Then, in October, they will be training our students in Say Some, in the Say Something Program. Students will learn to recognize the signs, especially in social media, of any classmates that may be in danger and the steps to take to get them help. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Victoria and Shaniqua. Nice job. Thank you. Nice job, ladies. Last but not least, STEM Middle Academies in the house. Jordan Decoto, William Davis are here accompanied by their principal, Kevin Laline. Come on down, guys.
I have to give them a proper introduction this evening, so I'm only gonna be a couple minutes. But the students selected tonight to speak out on behalf of STEM Middle Academy recently received recognition for their participation in the Will McDonough Writing Contest, named after the legendary Boston Globe sports columnist.
Sports writer, yeah, yeah.
And this was a statewide contest where hundreds of participants competed at grade levels four through 12. I am proud to say that William Davis, Jordan Decoto respectively finished second and third for 8th graders in the state of Massachusetts. So, the format that is gonna proceed is a read out loud where they're gonna share excerpts from their award-winning essays. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's, thank you, Principal Laline. That's quite an award. He was a legendary writer to the days of Grantland Rice and other legendary sports writers. So, that is Damian Runyon. So, that's a great award. Congratulations.
Thank you. So, my name is Jordan Decoto.
You have to speak a little louder. That amplifies for TV, so we wanna hear you a lot.
So, my name is Jordan Decoto, and I'm going to read an excerpt of my essay about soccer.
Okay.
The flowing wind whips through your hair. The tender earth crunches beneath your feet. The ball bends through the air and the faint blow of whistles can be heard. This is the game of soccer. Complex, intense, captivating, and amazing. Despite me being, only being 14, I have such an intense passion for what soccer is. Throughout the past nine years, I've got to experience the pure exhilaration and rush of the game. Although I may not be a star player when it comes to soccer, some moments are permanently etched into my mind. Achievements that can only be executed by me, even if it's been stumbled upon centuries ago. I've had the honor of doing them myself. When I was seven, I played with females much older than me. I was small, swift, and determined. It was at such a young age when I scored underneath a goalie's legs. Now, not only did the ball go under the legs, I did as well. Such a strange but deeply rooted in my heart event occurred that day. Now, fast forward to when I was just about 11 years old. During this fall season, I discovered my hidden talent of goalie. This was also my first year attending a tournament, and the outcome was legendary.
Very good. Mr. Decoto. What, what issue? Was it goalie?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was a crazy goalie in high school and college, too. Very good. Nice job. Mr. Davis, come on down. Congratulations on your award, too.
Thank you. My name is William Davis. I'm an 8th grader at STEM Middle Academy. And I'm gonna read an excerpt from my essay. There was a minute left. Kyrie Irving brings the ball up the court and has Klay Thompson guarding him. Klay Thompson has almost four inches on Kyrie Irving with an incomparable wingspan. Kyrie, Kyrie Irving signals to his teammate and fellow Cavalier, JR Smith, to set a screen. He comes off the screen, causing Curry to switch onto Irving, making Irving grin. Irving takes a hard dribble with his left hand to the basket, goes between his legs three times, hesitates, step backs, and shoots. All 30, 30.8 million people are watching anxiously as the ball goes in. These are the game winners. Game winners are one of the biggest, one of the plays that affect fans the most. These shots get them out of their seats and give them something to look forward to. They hope that games stay close enough that someone will have to prove themselves by having to make a shot with the, with ton of pressure, with all the eyes on them. As a fan, I love the thrill of a close game going into overtime. Then to have the game being won in the last few seconds, it's a great feeling in sight. It feels like you are watching a moment that you might talk about for days and months. Sometimes you feel like you have what, you have the chance to see something that has never been done before.
Nice job, Kevin Davis. And of course, that was the Cavaliers taking it to the Golden State Warriors with LeBron and team. Very nice document. Middle school representatives, you did an outstanding job. We're very, very proud of you. Keep up your good work in and out of the classroom. That concludes the middle school speak out. We'll have a one-minute recess. You're more than welcome to stay before we go into our formal meeting. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Here. Present. Present.
Present. Can we all please rise for a moment of silence and then we'll go into the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. We're also joined by our student representative, Kenny Asmith, who does a great job, very intuitive, and he is from SciTech. So, Kenneth, it's great to have you here tonight. We'll move to Section 2 of the agenda to approve the minutes of April 6, 2017, regular school committee meeting. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, there's a motion by Mr. Roland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Items requiring a vote of the school committee to approve the Springfield Renaissance Students' Travel to an overnight stay at Cape Cod Campground. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for Renaissance School for a travel to Cape Cod. I recommend approval of the request. There's information in your packet on it.
And there is a representative from Renaissance here. If there's any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? No motion by Mr. Roland? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy. Roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes, more than a second. This matter passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. B is to approve the school committee stand to recommend the legislature that they adjust the Chapter 70 allocation formula to reflect the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This went through our Legislative and Contract Subcommittee last night. As we've said before, the Legislature's Foundation Study Review Committee has recognized that they've been underfunding the public schools in the Commonwealth for some time right now, especially urban districts, which have left us with a little bit of a structural deficit we have to make up for every year. This is a move on the part of our school committee to request that they actually adopt their own Foundation Budget Study Committee Review Recommendations and properly fund the schools across the Commonwealth. For Springfield, we estimate that this would mean an extra $25 million worth of funding. So it'd go a long way towards improving the quality of programs for our students. So, the school committee went on record last year making this request. We'd like to go on record again this year to move the legislature to fund this significant request. Again, this is long overdue and something that really needs to be done. We've worked collaboratively with the Mass Association of School Committees, Mass Association of School Superintendents, and the MTA to move this forward, and Tim Collins has been a big proponent of this as well. So, the school committee acted on it last night, and Subcommittee, I don't know if a few school committee members want to comment on it?
Any questions or comments, committee?
Just an...
Mr. Collins?
Long overdue.
They themselves are recognizing the underfunding, so now we'd like them to pony up. We're being asked to do more with less, and we're deeply appreciative of the administration and the teachers and staff because it shows out in the facts and statistics that Springfield is leading the way for urban districts. And Springfield many a times is being used as an example, not only in the Commonwealth, but in the nation for what we're doing here. Is it difficult to teach in an urban setting? It certainly is, but it's not impossible, and we're proving that moving forward, and we're represented very aptly by Denise Hurst, who represents us on the state level at the Mass School Committee meetings. And again, Tim Collins just walked in. We appreciate his efforts on advocating on the Chapter 70 allocation formula. Any other questions or comments from school committee members? Hearing none? Is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Ms. Hurst is second. Second by Mr. Rolland. Roll call voters required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient votes. Matter passes. Thank you very much. Now, we come to a great, outstanding awards given to our dedicated teachers, and this is to recognize the Springfield Public School Teachers on receiving the 2017 Pioneer Valley Teachers of Excellence Award. This is again through the Grin Spoon that we do.
This is the Grin Spoon.
Mr. Harold Grin Spoon, and also Dr. Mary Ann Heron. They used to be at Brookings, and they do a great job recognizing our teachers. And with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great pleasure every year on my part. I get to go and visit the teachers in their classroom and tell them about the award, but this is recognizing 26 out of our 2,600 teachers. So this is a very prestigious award for teacher excellence. I've always said we're very, very fortunate in the city of Springfield to have teachers that are second to none anywhere, and I think it's a challenge to teach in an urban environment. But our teachers do that job in an excellent manner every day for our kids. So, it's a great pleasure to recognize our great teachers, and this is just a wonderful ceremony every year. We'll also have an event at the Log Cabin later in May to honor these teachers, but we wanted to recognize them here today before the school committee. And Springfield's finest, we have 26 of our best teachers, and we have an outstanding group of teachers. So it's a great honor to say thank you for the great work you do every day. We have Sue Majka representing our office running this. And we're going to call folks up one at a time with their principal.
Yes.
And give them this award from the school committee in addition to the awards they'll get at the Log Cabin next month. This is something from the school committee, just to say our thank you for your great work.
And thank you, Superintendent Warwick, and thank you to your staff and administration. They always do a fantastic job of putting this together, and we really appreciate that. And I want to give a special little shout-out to Jonah Delgado over there, my macaroni pie boy. You should see him eat that macaroni pie on Christmas Eve at my house a few years ago. His mom, Danielle, is an award winner tonight, and Jose Delgado was one of my assistants who has now moved on to bigger and better things at UMass. That's for you, Jonah, okay?
Jonah's hands up, so he's... Applause. Thumbs up.
Bowlin School is in the house. Sarah?
They're not here, so we'll put theirs as high.
Okay, we'll put those... There's some... Is Bowles in the house?
Yes, they are.
Bowles is in the house. Liz Myra DeRault is here, and Principal also. Come on down. Congratulations.
Principal Mark McCann, so...
Principal McCann.
Congratulations.
Great job. Congratulations. That's his brother, the great one at Harris.
Congratulations and thank you.
Great job. My daughter Cassandra and Kiara, yeah.
Yes, indeed.
Congratulations to you. Congratulations.
Brookings.
Brookings is in the house. Dora Tochil, if I pronounce that incorrectly, please correct me. And Principal Terry, Terry Poe. Terry, you got that Diana Ross hairdo tonight.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Looks great. How's Bowles doing?
Good work, thank you.
Camara?
Okay. Congratulations and thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you for what you do. Sandra?
Yeah?
Dylan? Sarah? So Sarah Stone. Sarah's here? Okay.
Central's in the house, and Mr. Central himself is here, Principal Tad Tokarsen. Sarah Stone, come on down. John Sumzik, come on down. Just throw them all away, John. That's all. Give them an elbow.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very, very much, Steve.
Congratulations.
Any relation to Charlie Sumzik? He spells it differently in all his high school comments. Thank you very, very much, and congratulations. Chestnut Tag?
Chestnut Tag.
Used to teach me at the culture and high school commerce. Chestnut Tags in the house? No? No? Okay. The Berry's in the house. Principal Rochella is here. We have Sharon DaSilva, Catherine Kabachi, Ashley Manalaw. Pronounce that for me, please. Malanowski. Okay, I apologize. Congratulations. Come on down. Congratulations. Thanks for your work.
You got three winners when you move out of Level 4 status.
Thank you for all your work.
We know we have great teachers.
All the kids. Congratulations. Congratulations to you. So, thank you. Kabachi, congratulations to you. Nice to see you again. Malanowski, okay, I apologize. Congratulations. Thank you. Congrats. This district? Okay, okay. Laura, are we ready? Okay, from the district, Lynn Santa is here. And one of my kid's former teachers, right there, Ms. Hurst. And Harris, Laura, good to see you.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Lynn Santa, congratulations. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Say hi to your mom. She's a great... My girl's at Frederick Harris. Okay. Doorman is in the house. Elizabeth Be... Beale? Beal? Oh, geez, I'm looking at Beal School, you know? Come on down. Madam Principal is also here, too. Madam Principal, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Like those sneak, high-heeled sneakers, huh? Well, you got a hell of a handshake. Hate to catch a backhand from you. Okay, from that, okay. Okay. Been a long day. Ellis, okay. Yep. Congratulations. Ellis is in the house, and Cheryl Elias is here. Madam Principal is here. Ms. Verna is here. Come on down. Good work, Cheryl. Congratulations. I had a Mr. Elias at Kylie Junior High School. Any relation? So, maybe? Okay.
That's my husband.
He was a little bit older. Congratulations and thank you. Forest Park in the house?
Yep.
I saw Mr. Forest Park, Principal Tommy Mazza, and Kara Adams. Come on down. We were just at Tommy's pace for Neutral Corner, Pat Ireland Boxing, Health New England. Great sponsor. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I see Principal Ali is there. Friedman is in the... Just in case you didn't know that, Denise Hurst, another proud Central grad, indicates and says is a Central High School graduate. Okay. Ali is here, and she is going to accompany Vanessa Williams. Congratulations. Come on down.
Thank you so much.
Great work with us. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Principal, we also have, from Indian Orchard in the house, Katie Petito. Principal Samala, yes. Principal Samala. Great work. Congratulations. You got to be related to the Petitos, huh? Okay. You want to tell them I said hello? Congratulations. Okay. All the Petitos. Yeah, yeah. Oh, oh, boy. I'm going to have somebody else escort all of you up here, too, now. Kensington's in the house. Madam Principal's here. We have Danielle Delgado, and Jonah, can you help escort your mom up here, too? Come on down. Come on, Principal Thompson. Jonah. This kid can eat my wife's macaroni pie, let me tell you. Great work. Good job. Danielle, congratulations and thank you. What's up, my man? Got new hairdo, looks good.
She didn't want anybody knowing who she was.
Maybe I shouldn't have brought the kid up, huh? Okay, we're down to Public Day. Public Day middles in the house, Jonella Monaco. Come on down. Thank you. Great work. Congratulations. Monica, congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Renaissance?
Thanks for all you do.
Renaissance? Renaissance, okay. Renaissance is in the house. Samantha Edwards, come on down. She's still in the club. Thank you. Good work. Samantha, congratulations. Thank you very much. SciTech? Okay. SciTech is in the house. Kenneth said he could vouch for you. Jennifer Cherry, come on down. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. You curtsy, don't you? Lisa Godro? Lisa, come on down, Lisa. Dr. Walsh, here's Dr. Walsh there. Principal Dr. Walsh. Great work. Congratulations. Jessica Johnson? Is Jessica... Ty... Nguyen? No? Okay, so, okay, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Sten. Hey, Kenneth, this is your school, man. You had four of these teachers?
Yes.
Do you agree with the awards?
I agree.
Beautiful. You're all set, then? Okay. Sumner? Yep, Sumner. Sumner Avenue School is in the house. Principal and Kaiga Osborne Johnson. If I pronounce that wrong, please correct it. Was it right? Silent G. Come on in, Kiana. And then, good luck, Jim. Okay, he's also here, too. So that's sort of like a silent G. Great work. Congratulations. It's Kiana, right?
It's Kiana.
Sort of, it's a silent G? It's a silent G, then?
Yes. It is. It means future promise.
Well, you are a future promise for our kids. Congratulations.
There is a mountain in Kenya and a city named Kyag. It's a popular lesson.
I will never forget that name, huh?
It's in the book, Things Fall Apart. Dr. Kyag predicts that...
But then you put them all back together again. Yeah.
Wow, thanks for all you do.
Principal Dr. Sten is here, an old high school commerce alumni there, and we have Terry Longo, Warner School. Come on down.
Thank you so much.
Great work, Terry. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. And I think last, but not least, is my alma mater, White Street School, Margaret Tab. Come on down. Madam Principal, come on down. Congratulations, Margaret. I like the Petito family. You must be related to the Tab family. I couldn't skate to save my life. Yeah, congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. Congratulations to all our teachers. Thank you. Thank you, Principal Hughes. Thanks, Kristin. Thank you, everybody. Okay. We will now go to our reports of standing committees. Student relation, parent concern, school uniform?
No reports, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B, Buildings and Maintenance Committee?
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. C, Legislative and Contracts Committee? We had an early... Ms. Perez? On the Chapter 70.
Chapter 70, yep.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. D, Curriculum and Programs Committee?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. E, Budget and Finance Committee?
We've met a number of times, but you saw the result last night. We're... Thank God, Donna.
Thank you for your efforts there. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. F is Vocational Education Committee? Thank you, Mr. Rolland. G is Technology Committee? Thank you, Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy. H is School Safety Committee?
No reports, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. We'll now move to the report of the superintendent. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a piece in your packet on the arrest report that has two pages. We had talked about this last night. The data is really strong, so I think there's some misunderstandings in the community on this. But if you follow the first chart across, you can go all the way back to 2008, 2009, when the ACLU did that first report where we had 444 arrests. If you track it all across, you see they've decreased very rapidly, and all of last year we only had 80 arrests, a small fraction of the arrests that used to go on in Springfield Public Schools. So we've done a lot of things with our Quebec team. They've done a great job. Did a lot of things with PBIS, City Connects to Address Behavior. Not only are the arrests way down, bullying's way down, serious incidents and suspensions are also down. So things are moving in the right direction.[1411.28]
Great work, congratulations. Monica, congratulations, thank you very much, thank you. Okay. Renaissance?
Thanks for all you do.
Renaissance? Renaissance, okay. Renaissance is in the house, Samantha Edwards, come on down. Good work, congratulations. Samantha, congratulations, thank you very much. SciTech? Okay. SciTech is in the house. Kenneth said he could vouch for you, Jennifer Cherry, come on down. Good job, congratulations. Thank you, congratulations. You curtsy, don't you? Lisa Godro? Lisa, come on down, Lisa. Dr. Walsh, here's, here's Dr. Walsh there. Principal Dr. Walsh. Great work, congratulations. Congratulations, thank you very much, dear. Jessica Johnson? Is Jessica, or Ty, Nuyen? No? Okay, so, okay, thank you. You're welcome, thank you, Doctor. Hey, Kenneth, this is your school, man. You had four of these teachers?
Yes.
Do you agree with the awards?
I agree.
Beautiful. You're all set, then, okay. Yep, Sumner. Sumner Avenue School is in the house, principal, and Kyga Osborne Johnson, if I pronounce that wrong, please correct it. Was it, was it right? Silent G, come on in, Kyga. And then, good work, Jim, okay, he's also here, too. So that's sort of like a silent G. Great work, congratulations. It's Kyaga, right?
It's Kyaga.
Very nice. It's a silent G? It's a silent G, then?
Yes, it is. It's a future promise.
Well, you are a future promise for our kids. Congratulations.
There's a mountain in Kenya and a city named Kyaga, it's a popular one.
I will never forget that name, huh?
It's in the book Things Fall Apart, Dr. Kyaga predicts.
But then you put them all back together again. Yeah.
Thanks for all you do.
Principal Dr. Stenon is here, an old High School Commerce alumni there, and we have Terry Longo, Warner School, come on down.
Thank you so much.
Great work, Terry, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, congratulations, thank you. And I think last, last but not least, is my alma mater, White Street School, Margaret Tab, come on down. Madam Principal, come on down. Congratulations, Margaret. I like the Petito family, you must be related to the Tab family. I couldn't skate to save my life, yeah, congratulations, thank you very much, thank you very, very much. Congratulations to all our teachers. Thank you. Thank you, Principal Hughes, thanks, Kristen. Thank you, everybody. We will now go to our reports of standing committees, student relation, parent concerns, school uniform.
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B, Buildings and Maintenance Committee?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Collins. C, Legislative and Contracts Committee? We had an early, Ms. Perez? On the chapter 70.
Chapter 70, yep.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. D, Curriculum and Programs Committee?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. E, Budget and Finance Committee?
We've met a number of times, but you saw the result last night, we're, thank God, done.
Thank you for your efforts there. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. F is Vocabulary Education Committee? Thank you, Mr. Olan. G is Technology Committee? Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy. H is School Safety Committee?
No reports.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. We'll now move to the report of the superintendent. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a piece in your packet on the arrest report that has two pages. We had talked about this last night. The data is really strong, so I think there's some misunderstandings in the community on this. But if you follow the first chart across, you can go all the way back to 2008, 2009, when the ACLU did that first report where we had 444 arrests. If you track it all across, you see they've decreased very rapidly, and all of last year we only had 80 arrests, a small fraction of the arrests that used to go on in Springfield Public Schools. So we've done a lot of things with our Quebec team, they've done a great job, did a lot of things with PBIS, City Connects to Address Behavior. Not only are the arrests way down, bullying's way down, serious incidents and suspensions are also down. So things are moving in the right direction, you can see the data. Year-to-date, on the second page, you can see that as much as things had improved in 2015, 2016, 2016, 17, year-to-date, we're even under those numbers, so we're tracking to come in where we have an improvement yet again this year. And again, a small fraction of the arrests that used to occur. I think that's attributed to what's going on in the schools, the hard work of the administrator staff in the schools, Commissioner Barberi and handpicking, an outstanding team of school resource officers, and the improved climate culture in the schools overall through the efforts with PBIS, City Connects, and other programs. So I think there's been some misunderstanding in the past where the data used to be a problem. It's really tracking in an extremely positive direction now, and I'm very proud of their, our staff for their outstanding work.
Superintendent Warwick, if I may state, I'm glad that you clarified this for the viewing audience and to the, to the media and the school committee members, and I want to thank you for your leadership, and I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Lydia Martinez for reaching out also to those groups, because some of the groups were going on 2010 data, which was incorrect, and they would continue to pontificate this prison, pipeline, prison, pipeline, school, the prison pipeline, which is just absolutely ridiculous. And it can show by all the positive programs that we're doing, not only educational, social, and with the Quebec team, which are specially trained under Commissioner Barberi, those men and women in blue are there, they create relationships. Only as a last resort is arrest made in protection of all the other students in the classroom. So this misinterpretation that continues to go on from these groups, many a times from the outskirts of the city of Springfield, that try to tell us what to do, but many a times their own districts do not take any type of alternative programs or any challenges that we face, is terrible. So again, we go to the facts on this. Down a tremendous amount, and this goes to the wraparound programs that we're, are doing. So when you read these articles that come across, the schools, the prison pipeline, going off information of seven or eight years ago, it's misinformation, it's false, and we've made tremendous headway. We want to make sure every one of the students has the ability to move forward. If there's a situation, it will be dealt with. But I'm gonna say it, you have some groups that just want to continue to perpetuate for their own good, not the good of our students. Facts are right here. Facts are right here. So I appreciate that Superintendent Warwick, that you put out this report, but many a times the media will paint one, will paint one side of the story, and not the other side of the story.
Another program that's really been affected is, is a diversion program. We put it into place with the police department, so what if someone is arrested for a minor offense? They go to a diversion program on Saturday and don't go to the courts and get an arrest record. So that's another positive program that we started in the last few years that's really working. But all the programs in general are moving us in the right direction, and the schools are safer than they've ever been.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Gresham?
It's on the website, the school website.
That's right.
So they can go on and look at it and see the positiveness that we've made since 2010.
Yeah, Ms. Gresham's also been on the forefront of this with the Public Safety Subcommittee that we have, the School Safety Committee that we have, and it gets very disheartening at times when certain entities of the media, not all, will quote statistics of seven, eight years ago, when they are given, the groups are given the information, the media is given the information, and I'm not saying all outlets, and they just continue to perpetuate that term, and I can't stand that term, school, the prison pipeline. Mr. Olan?
Is there a way we could mail this to the groups themselves with the new data? Just that way they'll have it?
Yeah, well, what we've done is Lydia, a few groups came forward, and Lydia actually went to meet with the groups and brought them the data. So as groups come forward, we're gonna go out and actually meet with them and explain what's really going on, because the data is something that I think we can be very proud of. But we have to keep putting it out there, because the folks that perpetuated this data initially, the first year it came out, it was two or three-year-old data, but now it's extremely old data, and the facts are just changed in a very positive direction. So we'll get out there, so if there's any groups that have a question about this, we'll be glad to go out, meet with them, and present the facts, and present what we're doing.
And there's a correlation here. Graduation rates are up, all these rates are up higher than the state average. Test score rates are up, attendance rates are up, truancy has been cut in half, dropout rate has been cut in half, so there's a core, positive correlation that is occurring here. And again, the Superintendent Warwick, and again, the Assistant Superintendent Martinez, who has reached out to these groups, all we ask them is please put the proper information out there. Ms. Hurst?
Yes, can I, so I'm looking at this chart, and I'm looking at Kylie, for example, and that's a, that's a huge drop or decrease, and I just wondered, was there anything specific that happened at Kylie?
I will tell you that Principal Sutton has just done a remarkable job at Kylie Middle School. Great staff in place, they've really implemented City Connects, PBIS with fidelity, they've restructured the building, reorganized the building, and Kylie is like a very changed school and dramatically improved. And when you go through the halls of Kylie, you'd see what I mean. It is a school that's under control, learning is going on, that's just a very different place than it once was, but it's a credit to the staff at the school and Principal Sutton.
Yeah, that looks amazing.
It's incredible.
That was a good pickup, Ms. Hurst, a dramatic decline.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, Chestnut, too. I'm sorry, I get a little emotional on this issue, so I thank you for allowing me to interject, Superintendent Warwick. If there's any more questions or comments on this report? Attorney Phelps?
Just in response to Ms. Hurst's question, Mr. Mayor, the, the other, I think, explanation for the dramatic drop is that the statistics, which are the very old statistics, included any arrest on school property.
Oh.
So a parent who had an outstanding warrant that happened to be on the property, that counted in those old numbers. I just want to emphasize that the record-keeping for the last four years are the true numbers of school-based arrests for students who have committed a criminal offense on school property. In response to Mr. Old Dan's question, I send these, as the superintendent provides them to the school committee, to the Department of Justice, maybe as part of their
DOJ.
Now, four-year-old investigation of the city of Springfield, to show them the dramatic results that have occurred through the efforts of the staff and leadership of the school committee and the superintendent. I also produce them with regards to our federal lawsuits, because the statistics, the data does matter and does count.
That's, thank you, Attorney.
That's really good, Senator.
That is really good to know, because I, I.
Yeah, for years, the police actually conducted arrests on warrants for things that occurred out of school, but they conduct the arrest in school and count that as a school-related arrest. So when we really dug down into the data, we did a lot of correction of the data also. So Bill works very close, Bill Baker, our Security Director with the Police Department, so we have actually factual data to make our decisions on and to put interventions in place on, and that's, that's been a big improvement.
But as many times as we've educated these outside groups about those numbers, the old numbers, it falls on deaf ears.
Yeah. We also, my, every other week I have meetings with the court officials and school officials in probation, parole, and the police department on a hot list, but we also troubleshoot to say, here's, well, here's a kid that we feel that might be a little bit, needs intervention. And then Bill, your Bill Baker's at these meetings also, and DMOS on how if there's a program, we can help this kid out, we try to move the kid into that program. Any other questions or comments? And Assistant Superintendent Martinez, you were out there corralling our award-winning teachers, which they should celebrate. We appreciate your efforts on the outreach, these groups, getting them the proper information and through Superintendent Warwick, to let them know what exactly we are doing, and don't base it on a few individuals or agitators that just want to drive their own agenda, not the kids' agenda. Superintendent Warwick?
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments on Superintendent Warwick's report? Okay, hearing none, unfinished business? Say again, unfinished business? Hearing none, and new business? Say again, new business? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Mr. Olan, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. All those who favor say aye, all those who oppose, the ayes have it. Good evening, and thank you for watching.